We'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of January 7th. And it is a historical meeting because it is the first meeting of the city commission since the NDSU football team repeated as national football champion. We wanted to make that point since our city attorney is a University of North Dakota graduate. Okay, are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing done, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Second.
With the motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So the motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Doc, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. The first item we have there is tobacco ordinance. And Mr. Coling, would you introduce that, please?
Yes, Mr. President Commissioners, this proposed ordinance is a reflection of the recently passed Measure Four in North Dakota. You'll recall Measure Four essentially prohibited smoking within any indoor facility or place of employment. There are exceptions, some limited exceptions for residences that are not used as offices. But in substantial part, the ordinance prohibits smoking within most buildings in North Dakota. The ordinance adopts into our city code substantially all of Measure Four and would allow us to prosecute violations of the ordinance through municipal court rather than through district court as we would have to do otherwise. Chief Dossinger did organize for us a meeting with some of the bars and other businesses that would be affected by passage of this ordinance. We were able to discuss some of the implications of this ordinance with them and believe that was a very successful meeting as well. City staff would recommend approval of this ordinance. And for your record keeping, this will be ordinance 1495. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners to Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, for the most part, what we're really doing here, we're not adding anything to present law, really. We're just bringing it into our jurisdiction.
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coling, the fines that are referenced in this ordinance, are those the fines that were set forth then in the measure that passed?
That's correct. The same fines that are included in Measure Four.
Thank you.
You know, the only, and this is probably a minor thing, the only thing that jumped out at me a little bit is in Section 60, Item Three about posting on every vehicle and wondering if that's not a hardship for some employers, but if that's in the state law.
Mr. Jackson, yes, that was part of Measure Four as well. If a vehicle is used as a place of employment, then the measure requires that license or that sign, rather, to be posted on the vehicle.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, 1495, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Okay, is there any other questions or comments by city staff or city commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding the first reading of 1495?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance number 1495, first reading.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The second item, then Item B is an annexation for Evangelical Bible Church. And Mr. Coling, is this yours also?
I can take it, Mr. President. This proposed ordinance provides for the annexation of about two acres parcel that is currently located just north of city limits, adjacent to the currently existing Evangelical Bible Church. Because the proponent of this annexation, or the applicant for this annexation owns all of the property that would be annexed here, state law allows us to annex the property by ordinance rather than by resolution as we've typically done in the past. The parcel is intended to be used by Evangelical Bible Church as an expansion of their church and school facilities. They have been in believing contact with Mr. Cortan's office to discuss some of the details of their continuing building plan and expansion. For your information, this would be ordinance number 1496. City staff would recommend approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Mr. Cortan, anything that you would add?
No, Mr. Altman summarized that well. This is a project that I've been working on with them for well over six months and think it'll be a nice addition when all said and done. This is for their, for new gym, additional rooms, and for their expansion ultimately into a high school sometime in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President. Mr. Steiner. Mr. Cortan, I think it's a great project for them. On the, this addition would be to the north side of their facility as it is now?
That is correct.
And the road or the street with the go east and west, is that still going to be straight through there, or is there going to be?
Whenever we have a plat that comes through for the corte property, they have to factor into consideration for this. I looked at 29th Street and in the next subsequent road, and I didn't see that that would be a problem for the future alignment of it. So I don't anticipate any problems for future expansions as they go east and west.
Right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
You know, I don't have a problem with this annexation, but we did do another one in the area just a few months ago, I think, maybe eight, nine months ago, something like that. If we keep getting these in this area, and this is pretty prime, I can see where we might get some more annexation creep, if you will, up here. We should be asking somebody to lay out some streets up there and so we know that we're -- are they going to plat this?
They're adding it to their existing plat that they have right now. So I didn't, I wasn't necessarily concerned. It's an aggregation to that existing lot. It's part of a unified development, so I felt that was appropriate. If it was obviously going to be split for another purposes, then they would have to come back through our plating process.
Yeah, I just think before we do too much more up there that we should be asking the owner to do a little bit of master planning.
I would concur.
Other comments?
I just have a question, Mr. Cortan. That's Hope Christian and the church together are expanding, is that it?
That is my understanding, Commissioner DuKart. They have talked to me, this is going to be in addition to their existing sanctuary, they're going to have rooms, a gym, and some cafeteria for that. This will also accommodate them to move forward with their, with their high school, the new song, or the expansion of their high school as well. They, they have sufficient room with this additional acreage to have another building that would probably be when they would move forward with a, you know, with a full-time high school that they have talked about, or an expansion of that full-time hospital. I believe they do have one, but it's very small enrollment at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment on ordinance 1496, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public. Would there be a motion regarding the first reading then of 1496?
I'll make a motion for approving first reading ordinance 1496.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Doc will vote. Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the city administrators' reports. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson. The first thing on the list is a notification on the civil service committee member. Cal Coling has determined that he can no longer serve on the board due to some personal reasons. We're very, very pleased with Mr. Coling's time. He's been a wonderful resource on that board for many years, and he will be missed. What it has done is it's made us look at all of the boards, of course, as we do every year regarding appointments, and we will obviously accept Mr. Coling's resignation from that board. But there's others that would like to be reappointed, and I'd like the city commission to act on those. You should have a list in front of you. There are some changes to that list. I'll walk through them for you. On the Board of Adjustments, Trevor Ernst desires reappointment. On Planning and Zoning, Chairman Earl Abrahamson also desires reappointment. On the Civil Service Commission, Glenn Rochaugh desires reappointment. We do not, we don't have somebody at this time to bring forth, to take over Mr. Coling's place, so if you have people of interest, please let me know. On Urban Forestry, all members that are listed there except for Keith Fernsler desire reappointment. Under Special Assessment Commission, both Gary Bleth and Jason Henderson desire reappointment. On Historic Preservation Commission, this is a commission that we are in need of several members. So if people have a penchant for historic preservation, please get in contact with my office, and we'll certainly vet those and bring back other recommendations to this body. And then Mr. Steve is also up for reappointment on the municipal airport, but we, we're not sure yet if he desires reappointment. So I would ask that you reserve his name and not make it part of any motions tonight, but that you reappoint those that desire it as I've laid out for you today. If there's questions, I'll certainly try to take those. These are three-year terms on each of these boards.
Mr. Kessel, can you just give an idea of what a member for the Historic Preservation Commission could expect to do?
Historic Preservation Commission is a board that, or a commission that, it doesn't meet very often. What they, historically, in fact, in, they haven't met, I don't believe, for several years. So the commitment of time is very minimal. But if we had issues that came up regarding how homes should be preserved, or if there's policies that we'd like to see with regard to a historic district in town establishing one, and therefore establishing policies on what types and renovations they can do, they would be making those types of recommendations to this board or to this body. But historically, they've not met a lot. So Dan is in charge of this commission. He's our, our museum director, and he's got a nice background in historic preservation. And he's an excellent staff member, so I think he could better direct those individuals or answer those questions maybe than I, so.
Any other comments, questions? You're looking for a motion on this?
Yes, please. One to appoint those members as I've listed with the adjustments to the schedule that you have in front of you.
So I think the motion then, if you're so inclined, would be to make the recommended appointments, or listed appointments here with the exception of Mr. Fernsler and Mr. Steve.
And Mr. Lisko.
And Mr. Lisko? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard? Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item then is the home buyers exemption. The city commission reviews this every, every year, every two years. And the, just as a reminder, the home buyers exemption is a two-year property tax exemption that's provided to new home buyers, and it exempts the first $100,000 of value of a new home. We've had this in existence for many, many years. You've debated the topic a couple different times, and we bring this before you again because our economic situation is obviously robust, and we wanted to make sure that you continue to desire to have this exemption in place if that's the case. I will tell you a few facts regarding the, we're not asking for a motion this evening, just information, a debate, potentially. This exemption means that about $800,000 in tax revenue is foregone by all political subdivisions within the local districts. So that means about $200,000 for the city, approximately that same amount for the county, about 350 for the schools, and about 50 for parks. Those are rough numbers, and that's annually. So the exemption themselves, since they're for two years, you walk those numbers out and you're talking about $1.6 million in a two-year period. As I mentioned, we have a highly competitive housing market. I think Commissioner DuKart has stated that at this meeting in the past several different times. Sessur Hirschfeld has done some additional research in regards to this topic, so he's certainly the professional, or our local expert anyways. But I wanted to know if the commission has a desire to reconsider this exemption, or if we should just continue in our current fashion for the next couple of years.
Any reaction by commissioners?
Well, I can just give you a quick update as of today. We have 150 homes for sale in Dickinson. There's actually 190, but 40 have offers on them, so there's 150 that are available. 20 rural Dickinson, and then there's 24 up to 200,000, 35 between 200 and 250, and 37 between 250 and 300, and then 54 above the 300, which tells you those are all new construction pretty much. We don't have a housing shortage at this time.
We don't have a housing shortage?
For this time of year, no.
We don't have a surplus, or we don't have a shortage?
Well, consider, I mean, considering, I don't know what the winter's going to bring or the spring, but construction is going on as we speak, so.
Any other comments? Reaction? Mr. President, I would certainly be willing to take another look at this here. I, you know, when we look back, the reason why we did this here was to get the economy going and to help the builders and to help the buyers and so on. I think we're seeing that, definitely we're seeing homes being built and so on. We're giving up a pretty good amount of money at this time that we could use for other projects in town, you know, that we're losing on this here. You know, the people that are here have gone through the tough times, and we've paid our full 100% of the taxes and so on. I think it would be fair to have the new home buyers start pitching in to help us out with our other projects along the way. So, you know, I'd be in favor of taking a real good look at this here whether we'd want to renew it or not. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other comments?
Commissioner DuKart, do you think this is a make or break for a new buyer when they're looking at a house, when they look at the exemption, or how does it factor in, just from your professional standpoint?
No, I don't. Actually, what it does is they have to adjust their payments when they buy, when they close on the home, and then two years later, they have to adjust them again. So I don't think it's a make or break either way. In fact, most of the people moving here right now don't even know we have the exemption until we tell them about it.
Other comments?
You know, I think it's good that, that we review this also. I've always had a question about this. The only thing I wonder about is, we've talked before about how we move people from temporary housing into more permanent housing, be it an apartment, whatever, how we eventually move them from an apartment into a single-family home, and worry about the mix in our community. I would hate to do something that would not foster that healthy movement, but I don't know how we identify that. I don't know how we know that we would be accomplishing that.
The rents have actually taken care of that problem, because the rents are higher than your house payments.
Commissioner DuKart, based upon the questions that Commissioner Jackson is bringing up, is there a way, is that data available through the home buying process to know what kind of residence they're in today prior to buying a home? Do they have to fill out a form of some kind that indicates their current living condition?
No. The, actually, the only people that would know that would be the realtor, ourself, or the banks, because they fill out an application where they have to give their previous history.
And I suppose that's all protected, so we wouldn't gain access to that?
I don't think.
You know, we keep hearing stories about people moving to Dickinson who can maybe get into an apartment, but they can't get into a home. They don't have the credit, they don't have the down payment, whatever it may be. I'm, I'm not sure that a tax exemption is going to solve those problems, but.
No, it's not, because what happens there is the owner of the companies that are bringing them here are actually paying their rent, and then they're taking it out from their wage if they have bad credit.
Mr. Kessel, I, I think we could put this on future agenda for consideration, but I would recommend that in doing so, you also schedule at least one public hearing where the public can come in and speak to this issue. I think there's another factor to consider that I think would reflect favorably on discontinuing this, and that is, I think it's very likely the legislature is going to act favorably on the governor's proposal or, or something close to the governor's proposal where they will restrict the school district further from levying tax. I think right now they can levy 110 mils. Previously, they could levy 185. I forget what the governor's proposal is to drop that down to, but they'll lower it and then replace the monies that school districts lose with, with state money. So property tax is going to become even less of a factor in the future than what it is now. So when you're talking about exempting the first $75,000 from property tax, it's going to be a smaller number. So if we were ever going to make the change, now would be a good time. Also, this is the kind of thing that if the economy goes the other way, we can always change our mind and, and bring it back in one form or another. So I guess I'd be in favor of you putting it on the agenda, but also that maybe it be there for consideration along with a public hearing. So I'd put it on a public hearing first, and then, you know, a meeting or two after that to act on it. And it's the builders that are most concerned about this. We would also contact them so they have plenty of heads up that it's being considered. So if they want to come and speak to it, they certainly can.
We'll certainly take care of that. We have invited the Home Builders Association each time this has been under consideration, and I think they've shown up each time as well.
Yes, they have, yeah. Does that sound like a reasonable approach? Okay. We're going to try to get through your other items before we go to the timetable, so.
Okay, I heard you. Hurry up.
No, just be concise.
Okay, the next item is one you've heard several different times, the Public Works Building bid letting. There's no action required tonight after consultation with Attorney Coling, but we said we'd bring this back to you just to make sure that if you did have concerns with either the animal shelter or the Public Works Building, that you had the opportunity to raise them, barring any of concerns being expressed. We are going to let the construction bids for that go immediately after our meeting today or tomorrow. So if you have concerns, please let me know.
What does that mean in terms of the bid day? Do you have a sense of when that would be?
I'd be speaking with Ms. Perkel. I understand all the documents are ready. We would probably let it for about a three-week period, and it would be let this week at some point, and then three weeks later, we would gather those bids and bring them to the commission for approval.
Okay.
And then the next item is a public safety center. This is also another project we've been, had much discussion about. I believe included in your documents was a RFQ. We'd like to let that RFQ to find a professional design team to, to put that project together. The land that we're talking about is on State's Avenue, north of 21st, and on the west side of State Avenue. It's currently in a developing area. There's, there's going to be a lot of housing in that neck of the woods in the, in the next few years. The project is going to approximately be about an $8 million project. And again, if there's any concerns with the RFQ related to this project, please bring them forward because we'd like to initiate that one as well.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the RFQ? I have one concern, not, not so much about the detail that's in it, but both the Public Works Building and the Public Safety Building are general fund expenditures. And I would feel better about releasing this after we have bid tabs on the Public Works Building, because our ability to fund this one is somewhat dependent upon what that one costs, and also what we are likely to be funded in the next two years or so by the state legislature for oil impact funds. And my concern is we could put out the request for qualifications and perhaps even make a selection and then say, hold off for a year before we actually let you start designing it. It just, a lot of it depends upon where these bids come in.
We can certainly wait until February 1st to let that one go. We should have bids back, or maybe even the second week of February.
I think if you brought it back on the, you know, the meeting for the first week in February, perhaps we would know then, but I mean, I, I just hate to go through this if, especially if we have bid results that are much higher than what we're expecting. We've already raised our, I think our estimates, cost estimates a number of times since we first conceptualized this, this project, but that would be my concern.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if anybody else shares a concern.
I don't think three weeks is going to make a big difference, and at least we'll know where we're standing, so.
The only other thing that I'll mention then is our legislative process in North Dakota starts tomorrow. It's their official first day, so we'll be, the League of Cities will be sponsoring a phone call on Fridays to appraise us of bill submissions and their movement through the process. That'll begin, I think, at 1:00 every Friday afternoon. You're certainly invited, as a commission, to attend those. We'll have a conference call set up here every Friday afternoon. So I wanted to just make you aware of that, that conference call.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? All right, we, we'll go to the timetable agenda. We have a 5:00 item. This has to do with the Homeless Coalition, and, Mr. Kessel, were you going to introduce this?
Thank you, President Johnson. I am. I just wanted to, you've, you've been provided a great deal of information. I believe there's a packet on your desks that has been provided by the Homeless Coalition. They've, they've put a lot of time and effort into a process, replicating a process, I think, that has worked effectively in other North Dakota communities. that has worked effectively in other North Dakota communities. The City of Dickinson has been involved in this process, or at least certain departments. Our police department, for instance, as you walk your way through what's been submitted, has agreed to do some background checks for outstanding warrants on anybody who would partake in the generosity that's being offered by the churches. Our fire department has done a review as well. I'm not going to say they're not without concern, of course, because, but I think they're willing to work with all of the churches in mind. And what we'd like to suggest is that we go through a temporary use permit. It's something that may stretch our ordinance a little bit, but it is a benevolent cause, and we want to make sure that our code can work to make this happen. But maybe one of the requirements is that we continue to work with the homeless coalition to make sure it works better in the future. A lot of the things that are being submitted to you, such as insurance and training for volunteers, making sure they've thought about liabilities in terms of how many volunteers are required based on how many homeless people would be sheltered. I think they've done a nice job in looking at and researching. So with that, I guess the speaker tonight is Pastor Giselle, and I think he's going to address you on more of the details.
President Johnson and commissioners, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I'll try to be brief. If you have any, because I imagine you've had a time to look at it and you've heard Mr. Kessel's presentation, so I'll need more time for your questions. I'm meeting with you on behalf of the Dickinson Churches United for the homeless. Many of us are also part of the Southwest Homeless Coalition, and so we're working very, to say we're working in partnership is almost a, I hate to say a joke, because we're almost the same people. But this is a very specific plan that would utilize the churches to be able to provide housing for the homeless. It's only a temporary plan. It's intended to only operate during the winter months. In Dickinson, or I'm sorry, in Bismarck and in Fargo, they operate in the months of December, January, February, and March. We would like to mirror that. Of course, here we are in January. So we're looking to work this year in February and March. And in order to do that, as Mr. Kessel mentioned, we run into a zoning issue in Dickinson, which is unique here because homeless, dealing with homelessness is actually fairly unique in Dickinson as well. What we've found is that one of the unique things we run into in Bismarck and in Fargo, they've had a homeless shelter program in place that they were able to piggyback on to. We don't have that. We're actually blazing that ground. And so what our program would look like, just to run into it real quickly, and where the strengths of it lie, I believe, is we put in a lot of safety features because these are our people that would be volunteering. There are facilities that they would be in, and there are neighbors that we would be near. And so we took, we've taken a lot of time to look into that. First, screening. Many of the agencies and churches where the homeless come to right now seeking for assistance, but we don't have anywhere to send them, that's where the screening would begin. And within your package, I think you would find, there's a four-page intake form, and that form is strong for several reasons. One is because it gives us a lot of information on who that person is so that Southwest District Health will be able to determine if they're a health risk of some kind, but also because right now in Dickinson, there is no form, a release form, that homeless would sign allowing agencies to have intercommunication with one another regarding those individuals. So this form, and being on the homeless coalition, that's an issue that's been brought to our attention and we brought up before, is how can we get that? Because so-and-so can come to our church, the Evangelical Bible Church, but how can we converse with Stark County Social Services or with whoever? And so that form would give us the freedom to be able to do that. There's also, so the initial screening would be done there. It's at that time in their office where the warrant check would be placed. They would make a phone call to the police firm. I met with Justin Dossinger today, and that's where the warrant check would be made, would make that phone call. Assuming that the person checked clear, then a phone call would be made to a central location where the list for that day would be kept, the daily list of the 15, because we're only looking to, we're limiting ourselves to 15 as of now and for this winter. Coming off of this winter, once we've gone through, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of things we'll tweak. We'll learn to do things better. Right now, we're limiting ourselves. We'd rather start small and smart. Once the screening's been done, the reason we want to do the screening off-site is so that we would be able to then have them meet at a central rendezvous point where they would be then transported to the church. Part of the reason we like that, and being a pastor of a church, we don't want them just showing up at the church expecting to be allowed in. In fact, we won't allow that. They have to go through that screening process or they don't think you're going to the church. And if they insist, the police would be called, and they won't, they won't ever be allowed to be part of our program. So they have to go through that screening process. Excuse me. One of the places that's been offered to be used as our location to pick them up is Breakford Bible, that's currently zoned commercial at the end of Ballard. If you're not familiar with where they are, they're between the UPS building and Pizza Hut building, the old rental building. And so they would be willing to be used. It would be great if we could have use of even a city parking lot. I don't know if you even know parking lots on Ballard, but I just drove down Ballard. And the reason for that is, is as we would have read in the paper recently, the homeless will hang out in the library. And one of the issues is, it has been, how do you get them to leave the library easily? Well, we're planning to operate our program from 9:00 p.m. till 6:00 a.m. They would have to meet the bus before 9:00 if they want to go. So once they've screened, they would be told, "You need to meet the bus at this location by 9:00 o'clock." If we raise, the closer it is, is walking distance, but let's be honest, they'll walk from one end of town to the other, it gets longer, they can make it to the location where we want them to be. So they would meet that bus when it's available, and certainly for the first few days. Justin Dossinger mentioned that he would, they would provide a police cruiser to get us started, just to come and meet at the bus location, make sure that we've got the people we say we do. I really believe the current weather has helped to move the homeless on, and so the number has decreased. But part of the problem we have in Dickinson is nobody really knows. The agencies that you talked about around the homeless coalition, they don't really know how many there are. Our best guess before the cold weather was over 30, but we really, we don't know. And so one of the things this program will do is it'll help us to even know what we're dealing with because we don't, we don't know. So they would be bused to the church that's housing. That church would participate for one week at a time. There are nine hours where they would be housed. Once they enter the building, they're not allowed to leave. I mean, they could leave, but they can't come back in. Picture from, you're in, you're in, that's it. Fargo had told us, for instance, you need to have smoke breaks where you let them out. They need to be able to do that. But we found out from Bismarck they don't do that, and we're more comfortable just keeping them in the church. There is no going in, going out. We have four, we would have four volunteers on wait at all times. They would never be allowed to be out of sight of another volunteer, so picture two pairs of two. Every volunteer would have to be trained, and the initial training would be done by two people that would come out of Bismarck that are operating the program right now. So we'd have experienced people to train our volunteers. There is even contingency planning due to a storm. If we were to be wizarded in and that bus couldn't leave at 6:00 a.m., the contingency planning, that church would have enough food for three days for those people. They won't tie up the house, but they'll be able to eat. And there would be a cell phone issue to that church, and those numbers would be given to all the emergency organizations, police, fire. All the emergency locations would know that number as well as their schedule of what churches they would be at. So they wouldn't even have to remember what church we're at. They'd just have that number, and they'd be able to call and say, "Where you at? Can I just visit tonight?" And maybe we would love to have a visit. As I mentioned, if there was a emergency, they would plan to do that. I mentioned the benefits to the community in that letter. The one concern I know that has been brought up is, what if you're a neighbor to a church and they've got the homeless staying? And, as I just thought about that, right now, we really don't know whether or not we're moving in at night. Somebody drives up and poops outside of your house. We just don't know. But this program would be people who are screened, they've got a warrant check, they're being supervised all night long, and they're being transported back, back to that central location in the morning. And so I think this is a much safer plan, both for the homeless and for our community. It would benefit our organizations, it would benefit Southwest Homeless Coalition as they plan, so they can get better to ask what they're working with. And I think we could make this work. Can I stand for any questions that you have?
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I just have one question. Are these people actually working here, or they don't have jobs, they're just waiting to get a job?
They may be working. We don't, we don't really know. As a pastor, I've dealt with homeless people who are working, and I've dealt with homeless people who are in the midst of looking for work. And so I don't know, we don't really know until they're working with us.
Okay.
President Johnson, if I may, I've got a question and a comment. My comment first is, you mentioned the contingency regarding food, but I believe in your documents that you wouldn't provide meals, at least initially.
That's correct. Our intent would not, would not provide meals. Now, we know that in a church, little ladies like to bake things, so it's possible that there'd be some baked goods and things. We didn't want, we wanted to make this program as simple and straightforward as we possibly could.
Just wanted to make sure that was clarified. And then my question is, you know, with an unknown number of possible customers, and you've set your limit at 15, which I think is good, how are you going to determine which 15 if they've all passed your screening process?
That's a great question. In fact, that's why we moved to screening off-site. Initially, we planned to screen onsite with that bus, but our concern was, what if 50 people show up for 15 beds? That could be an ugly spot for physician number 16. And so instead, our screening off-site during the day, what happens is, for instance, somebody comes to me at the church, and I begin to go through that paperwork with them. And this would go on at any of the organizations that would want to take place, agencies in Dickinson. And so as they fill that paperwork out, now I would call that central place, the person who is maintaining that list, and I would say, "Mr. Pastor Ronald, see, I have, I have so-and-so who needs a bed for tonight. Do you have one available?" And they would tell me yes or no. So now we only have the 15 that have an expectancy to show up and be able to get on that bus.
So it's essentially first come, first served?
This year it is.
Okay.
And in fact, it could even be, we haven't determined yet. One of the questions is, what about length of stay? How many days would we let somebody stay? For this, for this first two months, we really just want to, we want to operate. And so we haven't determined that there would be a limited length of stay. If somebody was there, passed our screening, and was a good guest, I mean, they weren't, they treated things well, and they were just a good guest, then they could potentially be there for the two months currently. That would be something, though, that we would review in April. What we're hoping to do is put together this temporary plan that's very, very restrictive so that we can begin to operate, and then in April, we plan to review the program. And then I would hope that we would be coming back to you for a longer-term solution to the zoning issue. We're seeking the temporary zoning issue because otherwise, we won't make it this winter. And so part of it is to be able to provide that for the homeless this winter. And part of it also is for our own good that we would, we would be able to benefit the homeless.
I've got a couple more questions, things that I think you've thought about but maybe didn't bring out that our audience might really be interested in. Are you going to segregate men from women, families from, how is that segregation, if at all, and how are you dealing with active drug and alcohol users?
For the first issue, as far as gender, as we sat around the table, we realized that we do have something for women in Dickinson, albeit very, a very limited variety in the domestic rate of violence, but there is nothing towards men. And with the oil industry, while we know that both men and women have been drawn, Dickinson is primarily male. As a pastor, as those who sat around the table, we realize it's primarily male stuff we've dealt with. And so we are currently planning to just operate with 15 men, keep it as simple as possible. In terms of drug and alcohol use, if alcohol is even smelled, or there is any sense of altered mental state, then they won't be allowed to get on the bus. They're also only allowed one bag, and that bag will be searched each night that they would come into the church.
So again, I'm sorry, just to clarify, if they go...
Part of it is I've been so involved with it that sometimes I forget what little details might be very important to you, so I'm glad for that.
I think we'll end up with a public hearing, so I think this is the kind of information that people are going to be interested in. If they show up at the time of the intake at the various agencies, they're not an active user of drug or alcohol, and they've got a spot, they're number 13 on the list, and they show up and they are, did they lose that spot and...
They show up and they smell of alcohol or an altered mental state?
Yeah.
And the reason I say altered mental state is it could be, it might not even be drugs, it could be a mental, a mental issue. And if that's the case, then no, they're not allowed on the bus.
So then, do you take number 16 then? Are you still going to have? Okay.
At that point, then it's just limited, it just cuts down that name.
Okay.
At some point, there's a cutoff, and that's it.
Okay.
But they likely won't be invited back the next night.
Okay. That's good, or else you'd have all those folks showing up at the church again.
Right. We do not, our volunteers at the church, we only want them having to supervise. We don't want them having to do any screening or any of those other issues. We want, we ask the people who, who deal with that and be able to...
Thank you. Even with volunteers, there will still be some costs associated with running the program. How do you plan on funding the program?
We plan on funding that through the churches, through, for this year in particular, we plan on funding that through state offerings within the churches that are participating. We found that not every church, the church is building a situation that's so it takes to be able to house, but there are many churches, the few that are not wanting to house or able to house, that are supported. So we don't believe, as well as we've already had some pretty substantial partners come forward just today. I heard from the, in fact, I know Dennis is here. Dennis, Dennis Cannon from the hospital. They are, they are, one of our biggest issues is how are we going to wash the laundry each day? Because we can't assume the same person's going to get it, and we don't want to store dirty laundry, and so the hospital has agreed to do all of our laundry for us, as well as to donate the blankets, which is our greatest, our greatest cost. The buses are already owned by two different churches. We have the licensed insured drivers, and so, I mean, you're talking about fuel and some cell phones. So we think we can run it, I hate to say run it on the cheap, but this is about as cheap as you can make it work. And we aren't, we aren't trying to be the Hilton for free by any means. It'll be an army. If you've ever served in the service, those little, those little rubber mats that are easy to clean and hard to destroy, and, and some hospital blankets. So if that always, maybe even got through, just the light solution we can think of.
Pastor, you're, the minutes of one of your meetings, talked about an effort to contact neighbors and all that. Has that been done, and if so, what kind of reactions are you getting?
Not to my knowledge. I know the reactions I've gotten from those who, when the first article came out in the press, I had a lot of positive emails and phone calls, but I didn't have any.
Pastor, you're not being cheap, you're just being cost-effective.
That's right. Good steward.
There you go. Other comments or questions?
I think it's a great program, President Johnson. It's a great start. It's been a concern in the community for the last couple of years, how we're going to handle this here. I think it's excellent, and I have to support it because Father's in the audience here, and I'll probably see him on Sunday if I don't.
Thanks for coming, Father.
But I think it's a great program, looks like you're on the right track.
What, Mr. Coling, perhaps you know the answer, or Mr. Kertan, what the temporary zoning action that they're referring to, what, what is it that has to be done if this program is going to be allowed to go forward?
Mr. President, I could talk about that. I've spoken to one or two of the members of the homeless coalition, and, you know, look... through the code, we don't have anything specifically for a homeless shelter. That being said, I looked through it, we do have a temporary use permit. It is intended to be used on a temporary basis, less than six months. Obviously, this would qualify for that. And as long as you address the life safety issues, I think that we could, as Mr. Kessel has mentioned, we could, in essence, stretch it a little bit to include this. I think this is a greater good, I think all of us and the vast majority of the community would support this. The key is a balanced approach. We need to make sure that the life safety issues and the rest are addressed, and I think we could do that. As staff, we would need to craft some conditions to address that, make sure that the buildings, that each of the churches, that we have a fire and building inspection of that to make sure that everything is in line. That should normally be, they should normally be consistent with that anyway, but that being said, I think that makes sense. Obviously, Southwest Health District, if it deals with anything of food, or falls within their jurisdiction. And then address the operations itself, codify that, just make sure that we're comfortable with that. It does not require a, going through the planning commission, or even directly with the city commission. I would recommend that since this is a topic that is holistic, it's one that many people have different feelings about, that we would at least have a public hearing before a decision is made one way or the other. The way that it's worked out in code is that it's an administrative procedure that ultimately is decided upon by the community development director, myself. But I would want the input of you as a commission, and then also notification of the surrounding properties that, because just about every one of these churches, except the first one, is located in the residential district. And I think that's a discussion that we need to have, is how do we notify that, the surrounding neighborhood? Should it be similar to what we would do with a normal special use permit, where we could provide the churches with the names of people within 300 feet, and then they send out notifications, so it's not incurred by the city? That would be my recommendation. Or the city could send out notification and say, let's say, next meeting, the 21st, that we will have a public hearing to discuss this before we issue a temporary use permit, and factor in comments from the surrounding neighborhood. Those are some ideas that mainly we would need to craft as part of our condition. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. President, but I think ultimately, we feel comfortable with doing it in-house, we just need to make sure that we have a balanced approach with this.
The temporary use permit, since they're only looking at a handful of months per year, would you just reissue the temporary use permit on an annual basis if this worked?
My suggestion would be that we would do a temporary use permit for this year, for three months, for the remaining three months. Then work with the homeless coalition and the churches to craft a homeless shelter ordinance. That would be a permanent ordinance that we would apply, and not go through this mechanism as a temporary use. We could, but it would make more sense that we would work over the next year to craft a homeless shelter ordinance that would be, that could be used by not just them, but maybe another organization, but we could address all these issues on a more permanent basis. That would be my recommendation.
It seems to me, since this year, you're really only talking about February and March, that if we're to grant a temporary use permit, it'd be granted at the next meeting, and we use the two months as kind of a learning period, and then you could craft, I think, something more permanent for 2014 and beyond. But chances are, no matter how well you try to plan in advance now and craft something, 90 days from now, you're going to say, based upon our experiences, this needs to be done differently. Because as you've stated, there's really several great unknowns. One of them, you don't know if you're going to have demand for 15 beds or 50 beds. You know, you might even only have demand for four, or five, or six. You don't really know. So I would say, since time is short, I think there's kind of some general support here. I know the churches have been actively doing this for some time, so you've engaged your congregations in discussion. This is going to be broadcast here in a few days. I suspect it'll get coverage in the Dickinson press, so the public is going to get to know. And I think maybe if we could have our staff do whatever drafting has to be done on this temporary use permit, let's get moving on that, act on it at the next meeting, use the next two and a half months as a learning period, and see where we go from there. Otherwise, if we try to do everything else, but you're going to have a homeless shelter for the last two weeks in March, and that's going to be it. So, is that sound reasonable?
Is there generally any charge for the special use permit or temporary permit?
I recall, I think it's $50. That's something that could be, you know, it's a commission, if you wanted to waive that fee, you can do that as part of your adopting of this.
President, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but you must have talked, as a group, you must have talked about a permanent solution. Can you give us just a minute or two, what's been discussed, what's in the horizon out there, what are some of the thoughts?
You know, with our, this committee is almost a, you can picture, as an old math teacher, a Venn diagram, when you've got the Dickinson Ministerial and the Southwest Homeless Coalition, and we're kind of that group that's in both of them. And, but Joe's been working with the Southwest Homeless Coalition a lot longer than I have. I think he's much better versed on long-term plans. In Bismarck and Fargo, this churches program is actually the, they use it as the overflow of their current shelters. And in Dickinson, because we can make this, we can work much more quickly, we're doing it exactly opposite. We're breaking the ground with the churches, and then from that, we'll spring forth more of the long-term. So it's exactly opposite from those two, in that regard. How it operates will be very similar, it's just we can't use their infrastructure, we have to create our own. That's where we've had the most difficulty, where we're going into. But long-term, I would leave that to Joe.
Yeah, long-term, I was here a lot of months ago, explaining how the long-term program, and that's to understand process. What became very evident to us here over this next year, for us to accomplish something, is that the homeless coalition made itself into a lab organization that wasn't going to make it. This year, our 501(c)(3) was getting thrown behind. There are just a lot of issues that need to take place, you have discussed it here, tonight or later. So it's just little things like that, that just keep on adding up there. The data that's going to come out of here is going to give us a lot more to be able to work with when we start writing for other grants, start looking for a basis to go. Number one, what kind of financial control, just exactly where are we going? That's going to give us a stronger basis to do that, because we're going to be able to collect it, you know? And the churches were very gracious, they done extremely amount of work to do that. So that data that's going to come here, and their effort's not going to be lost. Hopefully, we can turn it around someday to have an organization that can support the homeless, and go with some other successful programs like Fargo and Bismarck, where the churches become an open source, where they can take people that are ready, that screened, and we can ask them to take them, and there's not issues with that. Right now, there are some elements that's going to come into this program, we're going to find them. But our long-term program is still set to be able to make it a grant-funded, a donation-funded program, so we can support it. Too much to revert now on taxpayer.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wanner, while he's up there? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions here? The recommendation I made on how to act on this, do you agree or disagree? You're okay?
Agree.
Mr. Kessel, Mr. Colley, Mr. Kretan, would you be okay with that?
Yes, Mr. President, if you prefer, what I've already anticipated is that we would meet as staff, we would go over, you know, what we think are the necessary life safety issues, provide that as part of conditions of approval of the temporary use permit, and then provide that information to you at the next meeting for adoption.
And, Mr. Kessel, if you want, and if the others want, I mean, we could have a public hearing followed by action on the temporary use permit, too. But I think if there is going to be a positive outcome here, I think we have to act at the next meeting, so they have time to, you know, actually function in February and March.
I just wanted to make a, just to remind everybody, that the homeless coalition is one that comes before you each year to ask for dollars, and you did provide some funding to that organization this year. Wasn't a whole lot, a little less than asked, but certainly there's dollars that you did provide, that will be provided to them here in January.
And to be clear, this is, while many of us are part of that same, this is its own. We actually intend to operate as an entity within the Dickinson Ministerial to begin. And the reason for that is because of the financial question that you asked. The monies that come in and are expended, we want to be able to maintain an accurate record of the monies that are received and expended, both for the sake of those who give, to be transparent, but also for the sake of future planning. And so we're going to be, our intent is to go to the Dickinson Ministerial tomorrow, of which we all are, and become part of that, so that we would have our own checking account to them. So this would be funded separately even from those dollars, it would be just to the church. So we're not asking to have funds that way.
Well, thank you for being here, and then we'll have this on the agenda at our next meeting, which would be two weeks from now.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Okay, the second item we have on the timetable has to do with Affordable Housing Project from Northern Place Apartments. And, Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this also?
Thank you, President Johnson. As you are aware, because you've acted on these types of issues in the past, any affordable housing that goes after federal tax credits has to have a letter of support from the community in which they'll build these structures. So actually, the next two agenda items that we have, or at least next two timetable agenda items, are both entities that would like to apply for federal tax credits. They're here to try and receive a letter of support from the city of Dickinson, and I think we have a presentation. Oh, there he is. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, this is the commission. My name's Alex Burke Alter from the Homeless Coalition. I've forwarded some information to you guys, in an effort to be successful, to be concise. I won't re-agitate all of that. Just briefly about myself, I've been working in this industry for seven years, who was very different company, the owner of that, I live in Zulu, Montana, and frankly, he kind of mileage out and just couldn't get him excited to get cried by the Dickinson more so. He moved into retirement, and same sheet of music, just a different title on the song. We completed the Dickinson Place Townhomes in 2005. Directly, I think we bought that man from the city for about $15,000. But what we have for us today is the Northern Place Apartments, that I'm proposing to apply to the Dakota Housing Finance Hall. It's 42 units of affordable rental housing developed using federal housing tax credits. The project is located intersection of what will be, I guess, 10th and 40th Street, kind of the front of Meadows, the fourth position there. And as Mr. Kessel has mentioned, we're seeking a letter of support from the city, that is requirement of the tax credit applications. I don't have to convince you guys to leave, I think that's been done. Our rents for a two-bedroom will be between $360 and $755. A three-bedroom, $405 and $850. I was pleased, usually, the rental rates and the income limit for the tenants is based on numbers published by us, which seem to lag by decades. And I was pleased this year, they seemed to be on the ball, and they've raised the income limit for these units by only $5,000 for some household sites. So they are finally catching up with what you guys are experiencing. You know, our typical tenant is usually a single parent with 21 and three kids, working at entry-level job. They've had a tough start, but they're trying to set themselves back together. One of the things I like about the housing tax credit, you guys talked earlier about moving people from homeowners to rental housing to ownership, as your income rises, your rent doesn't rise proportionally, you can stay here even if you live beyond the income limit, hopefully offering yourself an opportunity to develop some savings and things like that. But I guess, Mr. Kessel's, I'm kind of preaching choir, we got a lot of projects. There is one other thing I'd like to ask for, in addition to the letter of support. I'd request that the city consider and enter into a payment and low taxes agreement. These housing tax credits are incredibly competitive. The state never has enough credits to go around, but all they ask, you guys have done very well, the last couple of years, I'm just in Dickinson, got projects, and I think to continue that success, it would be with me or the president, and they'll both be good projects. I would request that this would be another patch, or pilot, it would be another patch we can put on our SASH, maybe patches to demonstrate, we're not just saying we support this, we're putting this development behind it. I worked with the city assessor, and Stark County Tax Equalization, and we came up with an estimate, without any changes, the city would, or the project would contribute just under $24,100 a year in city mills. And so 50% reduction of that, to about $12,000. I'd ask that that go for 15 years. There's restrictions and requirements on the project that will not change ownership for 15 years. So all of our financing projections, loans, equity investments, all those things are based on the start, and I think changes for 15 years or less is going to come along. Are there any questions?
On the payment and low taxes, you're proposing 15 years payment of what amount?
50% of what would regularly be assessed, and working with the assessor, current bills, the estimated regularly would be paid about $24,000. So we would only have to, we see it.
Other questions or comments here?
President Johnson, I do have one.
Mr. Kessel.
Mr. Burke Alter, we've spoke on the phone, and one of the things that you were undecided at the time was how many units. You stated 42 today, your material has said, I think, 39, or a number less than 42. So is 42 the number?
We said a lot of 42.
You did, okay. You were able to fit it in?
We got the required part of that.
Okay, good. The other thing is, you've submitted some elevation drawings. Is this exactly the type of structure, I mean, this is a very good rendition of what it will look like upon completion?
Yeah. We're going to do, it'll be a true-story building, exterior and access, there's gymnastics. I'm going to go through with the housing finance agency, the top of the building, the quarter ones, the scoring, I'd really rather not just build another box with a central hall and two exterior doors. Like, if it speaks to the attitude to the building, we could look at that. I don't want mom of a young family to feel like she's taking her kids as a hotel, I want it to be.
And then just a point of clarification, you said earlier that if somebody is receiving subsidies, that they could continue to live in the building even after. I believe what you mean by that is they can continue to reside in the building, but no longer receive the subsidies. Is that right? If their income goes beyond?
Let me clarify, the way housing tax credits, they help us with the construction costs, but there's no operating subsidies. I believe this might have been such a successful program because it puts the owners on the hook. I've got to maintain a desire of the property for people to live in, because in year two or three, I'm not getting any checks from anybody other than my rental. What I meant about folks who move in, when they move in, they have to be- have to be below the limit. But, you know, we hope that they would get raises, will find better employment for parents couples beyond whatever limit was put in there. They're not on that.
It turns into a market rate unit. Is that right?
No, actually, no. They'll, whatever rental restriction was on that unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
We certainly need these.
Mr. Kessel, can you remind us what we have done in the past with payments in lieu of taxes?
President Johnson, without the benefit of having them in front of me, the only time that, in my four years of being in Dickinson, that you provided a pilot is to ill-income housing projects such as this. I'd have to go get out the documentation, but I believe 50% isn't out of line in what you've done in the past. Certainly, if you wanted to act on the resolution of support tonight, you could do that and postpone the pilot until a different meeting. Your applications are due in?
January 31st.
Okay. So, we'd have one more meeting. We'll cut it tight, but we'd have one more meeting that you could actually act upon the pilot. So, that we can be assured that it's in line with what's been done in the past.
Well, I would like that. I'd like to see, you know, you provide us with any of the, well, the information on the pilots we've acted on before, because I just would recommend that we be consistent here. And generally speaking, I'm not a big fan of the pilots.
I believe that's something I may even have mentioned.
Yeah. And again, I would, the reason for my asking is two oh one, it helps us make the sources and uses match. Those $2,000 we're not paying in property taxes, so borrow a little bit more. It's more dollars in the project. But the other thing is Dickinson is competing with cities all over the state. So, you think you guys could do as well if you want to consider behind it, will help the state, not just us.
I'll certainly have a conversation, provide you with that information, but it'd be my recommendation that you act on the support letter and that we bring the pilot at a different, at the next meeting.
What is the resolution number here?
Mr. President, this is the first resolution of the new year, so this would be 01-2013.
I suppose I could have figured that out. Okay. Any other comments or questions here? Do the rest of you feel the same way about the pilot? You'd like to see where our past history has been? Okay. So, would there be a motion regarding Resolution 1-2013?
I make a motion to pass Resolution 01-2013.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion to approve. And the second, any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. And I'm assuming the fact that we passed the resolution is also authorization for you to write whatever letter of support that would be appropriate here. You're welcome. We have another presentation, and this is from Heritage Hills. And Mr. Kessel, would you introduce this one further?
Thank you, President Johnson. This is a very similar type of presentation, different project, but certainly, again, a project that will require a letter of support from the City Commission. Mr. Madler has appeared before you in the past on projects. Unfortunately, his projects have not received those federal tax credit, but he's bucking it up and trying again. This one's a little unique, because I think this is a phased project as well. So, Mr. Madler?
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Mr. President, City Commissioners, City Staff, thank you for your time and opportunity to be here today. For the record, my name is Dan Madler. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Beyond Shelter Incorporated. I'm a North Dakota nonprofit developer of affordable housing. I'm here in David's representative of the county housing authority. And together, we would like to respectfully request the city's support for Heritage Hills. Heritage Hills basically is a affordable housing tax credit project, apartment community providing affordable housing for seniors, age 55 years or older, and located, and would be located in southwest corner of Dickinson. The project, like Mr. Kessel has stated earlier, would be a two-phase project. And when completed, would provide 81 affordable senior units to the community of Dickinson. Phase one would move forward in August, September of 2013. And phase two would move forward in August, September of 2014. Phase one units would be 33 one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units for a total of 42 units, of which eight would be fully accessible. The proposed rents would range from $475 to $585 per month for one-bedroom units, and $575 to $695 per month for the two-bedroom units. And these rents would include all utilities paid except for electricity. Also, these are proposed rents. 100% of the units would qualify for a rental assistance voucher. And to kind of recap, we've been taking place with the rental assistance voucher program, which is currently administered through the housing authority of Stark County. From January 2010 through December of 2012, for the last three years, 312 vouchers have been issued, parcels that would qualify for them, and Stark County, it's an only 25 will ever have been able to find a place that would accept an voucher. Part of a little bit more information about the project site itself. What you have here is the actual site plan, I believe in your packet that may have been cut off. But essentially, it was a two-phase project, a building shaped like an H. Phase one would be the first half, allowing community space. Off-site parking is available, both covered and regular parking. And then, basically, this project is also, it has evolved from a similar project that Beyond Shelter has developed in Fargo. And I actually have a photo of the finished product. This project is all process, senior project, 81 units, and we opened the doors on phase two in 2012, so brand new. Today, I would like to respectfully request three action items. The first is similar to the other applicant, that this commission authorized a letter of support for the project in address at North Dakota Housing Finance Agency. Secondly, that this commission passed a resolution of sponsorship for a CBVG funding application. And thirdly, would be, it could basically be placed on the upcoming, next January City Commission meeting. So, that basically, for consideration pursuant to North Dakota Center Code, Chapter 40, 57.1, which is basically a vehicle used for the payment in lieu of taxes, consider a property tax incentive, and also consider the possibility of waiving one half of the building permit fees, one half of the utility connection fees, and one half of the kitchen rental fees. Based off of the pilot, the century code that I just commented on, I have authorized, or I have publicized via public notice, coming the Dickinson Public, Dickinson Press, for both December 26 and January 2nd. So, if I'm able to be put on that agenda, it would be a public hearing, a main authorization for the pilot, and that would also supply official information for that. At that meeting, we'd like to thank you. Call for your final consideration. We might stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Madler. Any comments or questions here, my Commissioners?
Mr. President, Mr. Madler, you were before us several months ago. How much has the project changed from the project you brought to us?
The project that we have been talking about for the last two years, with which we applied tax credit, was townhome-style family, a long back corridor, and it was approximately 36 units. And so, by making better use of the land, it was, it's a four-acre site along the I-94 business route, as you drive outside of Lard and Dickinson there. And it basically changed from about 36-unit townhome style families, all the family properties, to a 2000-inch project.
So, it's not anything like the previous project?
Exactly.
I have two questions. One, what is the age group?
55 and over.
Okay. And are these income-based also?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Madler, you mentioned off-street and covered parking. Is there garages at all as part of the project?
Correct. Right now, on the plan, and I think it would be some air, there's 41 stalls, the 42 units in phase one. But that may change as well, costs. And what we've seen in typical senior projects is about 70%, 50% of the occupants actually have a car. And so, there's definitely enough off-street parking to meet 100% of the need. And so, we'll try to find a bunch of covered parking where possible. And right now, the current site financials, 41 covered stalls for the 41.
And a follow-up to that, since it is a two-phase project, my assumption is you have to get tax credits each year?
Correct. So, the phase one would be fully operational building with community space that could operate standalone. And then, we would, again, pursue funding through tax credit early on, like we did this year, to complete phase two. And we've done that at Wood State, North Dakota, two, three-tendering.
If you want to succeed, let's assume you are successful first year, but not second year. Does that mean you wait with phase two and try again the following year?
You continue financial.
One more question. You said southwest Dickinson. I don't see an address or a legal. Where's that at?
The address is 600 Dakota Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
This is in the Roers Development?
Correct. And as you leave towns traveling westward, along the I-94 business route, you'll see a three-story purpose building, three-story purpose building, big gap, four acres, and another three-story purpose building. And then, right north of that is the future home of the Sanford Medical.
So, the big gap is your gap?
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments or?
Just a comment, Mr. President. The gentleman previously was looking at a pilot from $24,000 to $12,000 for 50% for 15 years. Mr. Madler here is looking at a pilot set at $14,700 or otherwise $350 per unit, and increasing it 2% for a period of 20 years. I think this is something that we've got to look at, both of these here. Because I see you're also going to ask for waiver of building permits and then utility connections and so on. So, what happens if the next, the gentleman who was previously comes back and asks for some of these here? So, I'm saying, I think we have to look at both of these here. And, you know, I'm in favor of the pilot, and some of the tipping permits, et cetera, and everything that's on here. But, you know, we just spoke to a gentleman earlier, and are you going to crack me?
No, I'm not going to crack you, sir.
He's waiting for you to take a breath.
Yeah.
All right.
What's up, you?
Commissioner Steiner, what I was going to suggest is, Mr. Madler has made similar requests in the past. We can bring that document. I'd have the same recommendation with Mr. Madler's presentation, is that you allow us to put together a document that quantifies what these mean in terms of dollars, at least as best we can, and then present that to you at the next commission meeting, so that you have more information to review and then act upon.
Along with the history of what we've done for these projects in the past.
Correct.
Yeah.
We have a direct history with Mr. Madler of exactly, line by line, what we ended up finally approving.
Yes, which did include some of the exact things he's requested this evening.
Yep.
Another excellent project.
Other comments or questions? I'm going to go out on a limb and say this is Resolution 2?
No.
No?
Yes, it is Resolution 2.
Okay. Well, 2, that's the same number of consecutive championships that the NDSU football team has, Matt. That's not a coincidence. So, if you're so inclined, you could act favorably, or I guess unfavorably, on Resolution 2. And then, at our next meeting, we would take up the pilot requests and the requests involving the various building fees and connection fees. So, if there's no other comments or questions from Mr. Madler, the chair would entertain a motion regarding Resolution 2-2013.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2-2013.
Second it?
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Well, we're back to the regular agenda then, and it would be Tab 6, Planning. And I think these next three items are yours, Mr. Kerton.
That is correct, Mr. President.
So, you want to take us through all three then?
Yes, I will. The first one is a contract extension for the Dickinson 2035 roadmap to the future company. It's a plan. As you recall, that when we initially set up the contract with KLJ, but also with North Dakota Department of Transportation, we anticipated the project would hopefully be completed by the fall due to delays that we've had in, from NDSU on the population study, and then also the additional materials that we've had discussions on annexations and also the capital improvement plan. We have went over the original deadline, or the timeline for the contract. So, in order for us to continually move forward on that, we need to have a motion from the commission to extend the contract until, I would request that we would extend it to April 30, 2013. This would allow enough time for us to finish up our company. It's a plan. NDSU, I mean, North Dakota Department of Transportation requires a motion from the commission and just a letter of approval of a contract extension in order for them to finalize an addendum to the contract and then forward that back on to us. City staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kerton. You've heard his introduction and recommendation. Any comments Not, would there be a motion regarding his recommendation?
Mr. President, I'm over approving the extension of the contract until April 30, 2013.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Does this cost us anything?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, is Lyons Third subdivision. This is a final plat request. The subdivision in question is located immediately south of the existing Lyons Second subdivision, which is to the east of Fourth Avenue East and to the north of the 29th Street extension. The property is roughly 24.3 acres. City staff and planning commission recommend approval. The final plat contingent upon the three noted conditions that are attached with the adopting resolution. With that, I can answer- With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Corton. Are there any comments or questions? This be resolution three?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. President, is Cook's rezoning. This is a rezoning request from R-one to R-two for lot seven through nine, thirteen and fourteen of block eleven of Cook Meadow Hill's fourth addition. We have held up this rezoning request in order to determine if the commission would grant the wellhead setbacks. That has been granted. There are conditions attached with that that make these lots now buildable if they meet all those conditions. City staff and planning commission would recommend approval. There is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Corton. Any comments or questions here regarding ordinance fourteen ninety-four? If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on ordinance fourteen ninety-four, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. If no one from the public, would there be a motion regarding second reading of fourteen ninety-four?
Mr. President, move to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance fourteen ninety-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
No.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Mr. Corton, would you like to continue?
Yes, the last item I have is the building permit report. Before I do get started, I just want to, I don't do that enough publicly. I have incredible staff, a very wonderful, dedicated staff, and the numbers that I'm going to talk to you about tonight would not be possible without the staff within our department itself and in engineering and the other staff that we have around the city. I mean, these numbers here are staggering when you look at it. Essentially, we've had the same staff that we've had from last year, but we went three times in building permit activity. And I think that that speaks volumes for the people that work underneath me. So I want to mention that. Under commercial structures, I think my record's broken, but for the most part, it's the same. I mean, our numbers are just outstanding compared to last year, just for the public. We issued forty-one commercial building structures or building permits. This year, we issued a hundred and twenty, three times that total. Single-family structures are, ended-of-year total is five hundred and eighty-nine compared to a hundred and thirty-seven from last year, so roughly four times. And then when you add up the multifamily with single-family, we are at three times the building permit total for the entire year. Last year was four hundred and forty-nine. This year, we ended at one thousand two hundred and seven. And I would fully anticipate next year that our numbers would be higher because we have a front-loading of many, many apartments that are in the process of getting approved and going through the new building procedures that we have established. So I personally feel that we will definitely have more building permit totals than we had the last year. The numbers of the values are just outstanding. Last year, total building permit values was a hundred and twenty-three million. This year was three hundred and eighty-nine million, three times the total. And next year, we will have a higher number because these totals do not reflect Sanford's clinic. The majority of that permit has not been issued nor the Saint Joseph's Hospital. So I think next year, our totals will be well into the four hundred million, probably four hundred and fifty, maybe five hundred million when all said and done. So next year, it looks like it's going to be a good year as much as last year was. I'm anticipating that our multifamily housing will, due to the number of permits that we've been issuing over the last couple of years, that will start to peak, and hopefully the rents will go down due to competition in the number of units that we have on. So with that, I conclude my report. If you have any questions?
Mr. Corton, the bottom of the report, there's a line that labeled total multifamily housing units, and here to date, we have eight hundred and forty-six. Is that what I would refer to as kind of living units? I mean, if you counted every single apartment unit plus, you know, the duplexes and the single-family housing, I mean, that's what totals the eight forty-six?
The total, if you're referring to under the fees remitted to the city at the very bottom where it says total multifamily housing units, is that the one you're referring to?
Right. It's got a hundred and twenty-six last month, eight hundred and forty-six here to date.
That would be everything above a single-family structure.
Not counting, not, we'd have to add the single-family numbers into that to get total living units?
Yes, and that figure is one I have down four hundred and twenty-four, and I'm wondering if that total that you have there is a little off, and I wanted to double-check it. So my figures that I gave you tonight are based upon one thousand two hundred and seven, which would be that total, plus the one from the subsequent page of seven hundred and eighty-three. So I'm not sure on that one there. That's one that I wanted to check today, but unfortunately, I did not have a chance to refer to that. But that figure may be inflated. I'll have a correction if necessary at the next meeting. If I may, President Johnson, Mr. Corton, I did ask your staff about that. The number that's reflected on the commission reports is accurate. So the number of dwelling units in Dickinson that were produced this year, permitted this year, was fourteen hundred and seventy-six. That's everything from duplexes to single-family housing to multifamily.
Wow.
Mr. President, you know, with respect to that number, I have a hunch that you, Mr. Kessel, are probably going to use this chart a lot in the next few weeks. We should move that number on the total dwelling units up into that first area of the chart so it's more prominent. That's an amazing number.
That would make sense. Well, we started a year or so ago with respect to it because depending on how the application comes in, and if they come in, normally when you have a multifamily structure, it's one building permit for thirty units. And it was not accurately depicting that when you just looked at strictly building permits. So we changed that well over a year ago in order to actually reflect that. That makes sense to include it in there so it's all under one category. So I would agree with that. I'll talk to Aaron, and we'll have that changed for you.
Then, Mr. Kessel, I don't want to get into the debate or back of the envelope calculations now, but if on single-family units, we issued a hundred and twenty-eight billion dollars in building permits. And earlier, I think I heard you say that with that two-year exemption, we were foregoing eight hundred thousand dollars in annual tax revenue. I don't think that eight hundred thousand dollar number is correct because you could figure no more than two percent of that value for total tax revenue and maybe as little as one percent.
The calculations, President Johnson, were done by Assessor Hirschfeld. I believe he's in the audience. He may be able to explain those.
Well, I think you can get into that when we hold the hearing, but I'm just, I'm not sure the number, the number just sounds too high to me. Maybe it isn't, but when we have the hearing, I want you to make sure that you've checked and double-checked that those numbers.
I agree with you.
You know, I think if it was on the whole value of the structure, it could be correct. But remember, we're only exempting seventy-five thousand dollars under that current ordinance. So I mean, if, for example, if the home costs three hundred thousand dollars, you're still collecting tax on two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So anyway, I said, I don't want to get into it now. I just, it just sounded kind of inflated to me. And maybe it isn't. Maybe you've doubled and triple-checked it, and you can, when we hold that hearing, you can tell us that, but, okay?
I hope I'm right.
I know you do. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Corton? Okay, there's nothing from Public Works. Is there anything, my city commissioners? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
My name is Leon Walberg. I live in nine forty-one Thirteenth Street, West Dickinson. Purpose for my being at the podium is I received an email from Mr. Kessel about a week ago, and I have some serious questions on why I was emailed. I don't normally get emails from people of that position, and with everything being sent as courtesy copies for the entire city. I did write a letter to the editor. What I'm most concerned about is that it is implied in this email that, quote, "The rest of the story is not being told." And I guess I'm a little bit confused on what that is. I will tell you, I called Mr. Kessel the same morning I received the email. We had discussions on the phone, not to my resolution. So I'm here because all of you were addressed as courtesy copies. And I'm asking if you have any questions and what are we talking about when someone says you're not telling the rest of the story? Now, you each got a copy of that email, so you should know. And I didn't bring copies. I did bring copies of the tax statements for the property that were in question. If you don't have those, I guess I'm just wondering, do I need to get permission from the city commission to write a letter to the editor? I don't think I do.
Well, Mr. Walberg, obviously you don't need our permission to write a letter to the editor.
Why would I get an email from the city manager of this nature?
Don't you feel that in a sense, your letter to the editor was addressing the city management and the city commission?
No, I look at it this way. There are many entities that put their hand into the property tax pot, the county, the school district, airport authority, et cetera. Of the people that actually reach in, and I said that in my letter, the city was the lowest increase. I did not single the city out. I did put the percentage down. Now, I have a lot of questions for the school district, especially when the state government says we're going to buy down the school mill levy, and they got second highest increase on this property I mentioned, other than for the county. The county was the highest. So I don't know that why I would be probably more susceptible to receiving an email from the county commission or the president of the school board than the city. You people were the lowest increase, but it was an increase.
This was on your commercial property?
That is.
Do you own more than just that commercial, piece of commercial property?
Yes. I own a residence, which is in my wife's name, and I own property in Sargent County where I'm originally the family farm. Now, it was implied in the phone call that if I didn't cease lobbying on this point, that a larger number of people across the state would be told the rest of the story. I'm here to discuss the rest of the story because I don't know what it is. Now, I have the tax statement for my house, and if there is a question on that, I will be more than willing to answer it. If there is a question, you do know that I receive a veteran credit, which I did not ask for and nor was it solicited by me. It was not implemented the first year I had it because I said, "We're going to get tax relief from the city, from the state. There's no reason to put this on. Then I get the assessment for properties across the state that I'm involved in, and they're through the roof." But I hear Senator Cook, who was deeply involved in this, say, "It doesn't mean your property taxes are going to go up if your assessment goes up." That was a fabrication on his part.
Mr. President, Mr. Walberg, I think where the problem with your letter to the editor came in is a lot of people are deceived by it. You know, as you mentioned, it's your commercial building and not your residential building. A lot of people, when I'm out, ask me specifically what that was about, and I said, "I can guarantee you, it's probably your commercial building." So I think there was some deception there on people reading that letter to the editor and saying, "That's his residential. We heard from the park board it was going to go down. The school was going to go down. The city was going to go down." And so I asked you, "Did your residential go down?"
The property in the residence, after you eliminate the veteran's credit, went down to one hundred and twenty-five dollars as per your own personnel.
So your resident did go down?
It did go down.
Could I ask you to write another letter to the editor advising that your residential did go down and your commercial?
If I would write another letter to the editor, I would combine the two properties, and the total amount up would be like three hundred and fifty dollars.
Could you clarify it?
I don't know that I should.
Well, it was deception when it was put in the paper, Leon.
I took a specific piece of property. There's a separate tax statement on that property. I used legitimate numbers and legitimate mathematics.
I understand that. I understand that people read the letter to the editor, and that's it.
Whether it's a residential or commercial property, the money is used to run local governments.
Not when you write the letter to the editor in your prior stances in the last couple of years, Leon. You know it does not. You know what you were trying to do. We know what you were trying to do. And that is the reception that the people are getting out there now, is finally people coming and saying, "Well, he's talking about his commercial building. Wish I had a commercial building to rent the income that I could have." That's what they're asking me. I see it's his residential that has come down, okay? Mine came down. I've asked a lot of people. I would guess ninety-five percent of them said that their residential come down because they can't compare a commercial building to the residential coming down or going up because a lot of people don't own a commercial building. That's what I'm saying.
Property is.
And so you want a clarification, you know, the?
Excuse me, but gentlemen, the thing about commercial property is that it isn't revalued for tax purposes as frequently as residential property, especially in an active market like we have today, right? I mean, residential property, there's a lot of it being sold, and so in almost every neighborhood. So the assessors can see what the rise in values has been, and they generally go up almost every year. When it comes to commercial property, while we've had, I think, a fairly active market, it perhaps is not as active as residential. So every year, you don't necessarily see in a rising market like this an increase in the appraised value. I would guess, Leon, that you had a fairly substantial increase in the market value of the commercial property. I haven't looked at your statement. I don't know. But I'm assuming that you had a pretty significant increase in two thousand twelve versus two thousand eleven.
That is a fact. In fact, that's when I mentioned Senator Cook saying, you know, "Assessment increases don't mean property tax increases," and that is not a fact.
Well, and I agree with you there, and specifically with school districts, because school districts levy mills, even though their authority to level them has come down. They, for example, our school district for the general fund levels a hundred and ten mills in two thousand twelve. They probably leveled a hundred and ten mills in two thousand eleven. So your rise in value means a rise in income to the school district. Where, if we use the city as an example, I think we levied in relative. the city as an example, I think we levied in round numbers about $4 million in property taxes. We don't levy mills. They tell us when the calculations are all done what the actual mill levy turns out to be. So if the increase that we have in dollars is less than the increase that you have in appraised value, your tax actually comes down. But the commercial property doesn't get raised every year, year in and year out, as frequently as residential property. No, but Leon, that just explains why one year you could have quite a jump. Did the appraised value in the commercial property change in 2011?
Yes.
Yes. So it went up two years in a row. Did it go up in 2010?
I believe it did, but I only have the numbers of 2011 and '12 here.
I mean, that kind of surprises me that we would be on top of commercial property that much because, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I think we've actually retained a firm to help us with our commercial property appraisals right now. I mean, we're doing the residential properties on ourselves, but I think we, the feeling is we're behind on commercial and industrial properties. So we've, it would surprise me if on our own, we've increased these two or three years in a row.
As far as I know, at least three years in a row.
Well, same to me, probably. Well, and we all know property values are going up. I mean, you could sell, generally speaking, we can sell commercial property today at a higher price than we could one year, two years, and three years ago.
Let's just talk about rents. The rent on that UPS building, which is the commercial building we're talking about, up until 18 months ago, hadn't changed since 1984. So, you know, I'm no residential fat cat, if you know what I'm saying.
Well, you've been a very good landlord for UPS then.
Well, we're going to have some discussions, pair of us. Now, if I'm going to write a letter, I'm going to include all properties that I have in the state of North Dakota, including the farm ground that went up 27%, which was ridiculous.
In Sargent County?
In Sargent County. Now, if every quarter of land went up by that much in that county, that county is in a wash of money.
Well, we can't speak to Sargent County, but...
But I understand that. That's why I selected one property, and the numbers are correct.
Well, I don't think they disputed your numbers. They just would have preferred that if you were going to write the letter, which is, you can write it any way you want, but that you would include it all the properties that you owned in Dickinson.
It says, "I will be sharing the attached review with local legislators and a few others that I know you have contacted." I need that list because I want to tell them my side of the rest of the story. And I would expect you would supply that to them.
That's not a problem, Mr. Wahlberg. As we discussed on the phone, the rest of the story is the residential side of the equation, and I have no problem giving you the names of the individuals who were sent information.
The morning after we got this, my wife said that, boy, with an email like that, look out for people whose names are Vinnie and Lefty from Chicago because there may be a contract online. That was a joke, I know.
Mr. Wahlberg, you were with her for most of your life, right? You know that the property values have increased and increased and increased, and whenever property values go up, we are going to be paying higher taxes. When I got your email, or whoever I got it from, I just went on the city assessor's site and used the mill levy formula we used, and I didn't see your value going up at all for your taxes on your house, so I just blew it off. So I don't know.
Well, they actually, if you would, like I say, if you tracked out the veterans' credit, because it's only this last year is the year that I filed a letter, and it reduced by $125. Now, that's 4%, 4.4. With $753 million coming from the state on tax, property tax relief, and a statement, every time we renew the sales tax in this city or add it to it, there's always a statement in there saying, "And there's going to be some property tax relief." I don't know that that's the truth.
Well, Mr. Wahlberg, it is the truth, and, you know, we can show you right in the city expenditures, there's a substantial amount of money that comes from the half-cent sales tax that goes into the general fund for property tax relief. It's several hundred thousands of dollars each year. And again, this city, I think, just for our general fund, and Mrs. Johnson can correct me if I'm wrong, but if memory serves me right, I think we levied about $3.6 million for our general fund. And I can't quite remember, but I think it's $600,000 or $700,000 that goes from sales, the half-cent sales tax into the general fund. So if we're transferring $600,000 and levying 3.6, it's pretty substantial. It's a 15% or 20% reduction of what we would have to levy if we didn't have that sales tax. So there is a fair amount going in there, and we've done it for quite a few years in a row. It's on the record.
I just wanted to bring this up because I don't normally get emails from the city.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Not, we'd entertain a more...